Before we get to the call of meetings order, we'll have Mayor Cronin offer a word of prayer.
Thank you. What do you thought in heaven, we can be thought of this time? It takes even for the privilege to be here on council and to be able to discuss civic matters and to be able to find solutions to problems that are given unto us to solve. And we pray for that spirit may be with us, especially to protect our community. And we pray for the saints, come in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, the call of meetings order, I want to welcome those in the delegations that are here, welcome. Bill Creed from the Temple City Star and Corey McCarthy from Channel 32. And I'd like to also welcome those who are watching the proceedings on Channel 32 when it comes on. Glad to have you here. And by way of explanation, we have a few things we'd like to do first. We'd like to adopt the agenda if there is any additions that need to come forward. I'd like to hear those now.
The motion forward to adopt the agenda as presented.
All the favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, so the first thing we've got is some delegations. We've got Mr. Scott Turner and Mr. Doug Murray representing the airport and the Flying Club, and they have a presentation they'd like to make. So floor is yours or the podium, whatever you want.
Pass these over.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. We have a few new councillors since you last brought us the presentations, Scott. Do you know who they are? Councillor Court, Councillor Brown, Councillor Self and Councillor Drew over here, and then Councillor Van Green, the mayor, and myself. Glad to have you here.
Glad you've made time for us. Since we were last here, we've accomplished quite a few things out at the airport. And so for those of you that were here last year, this looks familiar, but it's updated now. We've put new information and updated it for you. I've got a handout inside that just talks about the flying breakfast we had last year that was the most successful we've ever had up there, over 385 people attended. And then the backside are just some pictures, some highlights of what happened at breakfast. So it's just something for you to see of what we're doing with the community and the services we're providing. One of the most notable things this year for us is that the Flying Club is now our registered nonprofit society. And so we look forward to working with the town in grant applications and being able to organize greater infrastructure out at the airport. One of the significant things to note about the airport this year is that Star's air ambulance is now basing out at the airport. So that brings a lot of service to the airport whereas before we just had the fixed wing fly-in medevac services. Now we have helicopter out there as well. They've got their own shed and fuel services out there. So they utilize the airport a lot along with all the crop spraying companies that use the airport. So those are some major changes that have happened over the last year since we last Some of the benefits of the airport for those of you that are new is that unlike Edmonton or Calgary or even Lethbridge, the Carson Airport is unique, it's small, it doesn't have a control tower, it's self-controlled by the pilots themselves as they fly in, they announce their intentions and what they're planning on doing. The neat thing about the Carson Airport is its close proximity to Waterton. And so we've seen a lot of traffic come into the airport, come into town, book a hotel room, and go up to Waterton for the weekend. The airport also is used by Excel Flight Training at a Lethbridge. They do a lot of flight training out of the Carson Airport, particularly a lot of stuff that goes, cross-country flights, navigation, so it's utilized through that as well. There were the helicopter training school out there that has successfully trained several students. We've got a parachuting company that wants to start up a business out at the airport and provide parachute and skydiving training. So there's a number of things for the airport that help us with bringing in people, which brings in dollars to the community. One of the things that we're trying to do as a society now is to get youth involved in aviation. George Porter, who's our club president this year, is working very hard to get aviation included in the curriculum for the local area schools so students can learn to fly and utilize the airport that way. Doug Murray and George Porter and Andy Nelson and a number of other pilots have provided hands-on services for local church groups and scout organizations and schools to come see an airplane, to touch it, to climb in it. And some lucky students even get to go flying. So it's a wonderful benefit to the community and we enjoy being out there and being able to use it. We have eight hangars out there now. Number of airplanes are under construction out at the airport within these hangars. So that's an exciting thing for us. What the club has done this year, or this past year, in partnering with the town and with the county, is we've been able to put on this fly-in pancake breakfast, which we did, that I mentioned was our most successful yet. It was a two-day event. We had a camp over and a barbecue and a movie. And then we had, the next day, we had the actual breakfast, and we had parachuters skydiving in for breakfast. And that was a big highlight. Kids really enjoyed that. Me too. I just wanted to go parachuting.
I know she has Batman visit too.
We did, we did. Batman's a personal friend of mine, so if you have an event that you want Batman, just talk to me. I'll make sure he's here. He just lives over in Sparwick, so it's not that far away. He actually wants to come next year on the helicopter, come in and step out of the helicopter. We'll see if we can make that happen. We've got a number of items that we're looking at doing this year as a club. We've itemized our needs on page seven of what we think are our top seven priorities. Our number one priority that we're looking at right now, we have a wonderful opportunity to purchase a new office, if you will, for the airport, our pilot's lounge. The one that's out there now is kind of old, kind of small. We have the ability to purchase a used AFCO trailer that's in fantastic shape, it has offices in it, washroom facilities, and that comes to us through Andy Nelson, who's our secretary this year. His company he works for has it, and they're finished at their construction site. And so typically what they do with those trailers is they put them up for auction, take them into Calgary or to Lethbridge to an auction, and they go for about $25,000 to $35,000. They're offering it to the club for $5,000, which includes the moving fee if we can arrange that $1,000 to move. And so the club is really intent on working with the town and the county to see if there's some budget there where we can get that trailer. It's an important thing right now because of the timeline. It has to be moved within the next few weeks. So that's something that we're really looking at getting. That will give us the ability to have a pilot's lounge, instructional classrooms, a place for the Star's pilots to rest while they're waiting for the ambulance to come in, a place for pilots who've flown in from anywhere in the world to spend the night if they need to. It's a wonderful opportunity for us. And then what that in turn allows us to do is to take the existing pilot's lounge and turn that into what they call the Arkell Shed, which houses all the lighting controls. And then the shed that houses the lighting controls, we can repurpose over by the fuel tanks for the fire extinguisher. So we're not looking at just stripping and throwing away. We revitalize everything that we have out there to the best of our abilities. And we see that this AFCO trailer will allow us to grow and to provide better services. The number two thing that we're looking at, which we talked about last year, was providing the internet out at the airport and having a weather station and a webcam. In our discussions with the county, the county has agreed to provide and pay for the service out at the airport. So that'll bring internet, high speed internet, up to the airport. We still need to purchase the equipment, so the camera and the weather station. And so we're coming to the town to see if there's some budget there for that. The anticipated cost of that is about $2,800. And then, like I said, the county will provide and fund the internet access for the airport. Item number three is the oiling of our taxiways that are out there. We talked about this last year, but as budgets go and timeframes go, there just wasn't enough time or budget left to accomplish that last year. So we'd like to get in at the start of the year this year and see if we can arrange with that. The county again was willing to help out with this, but we're looking at about a $5,000 cost out of pocket after everything the county puts in. The number four option, which the county has talked to us about, is a wonderful opportunity again for growth at the airport. The county has informed us that they're be putting in a water line close to the airport. And so they've indicated that this would be a good time to extend that water line to the airport and be able to provide water and septic services out there. So that's something that we would like to look into. I believe there's a possibility of some grant money for something like that, and if we could work together, that would be a wonderful opportunity for us to continue to grow. The club has obtained a bunch of runway lighting from the Creston Airport, so we're able to get those for free. And we've been working with the town and getting those lights installed. We have about 36 lights that still need to be installed. And they're not cheap to put in because of codes and requirements on the government's part when how those are put in. So that's another thing that we're looking at having done as we can. Item number six is we're looking for a zero-turn mower and a snow blower. All the equipment we've got out at the airport has been donated. Some of it coming from the town, some of it coming from private individuals, but it's all old, used, worn out, has seen two or three lifetimes. And so Doug Murray spends a lot of his time fixing this equipment just so that we can use it. It would be nice to have something that is commercial grade out there, that's dependable, that we could use, and that would really cut down on the time that's spent out there. And then finally, number seven is we would love to work with the county and with the town to be able to apply for grants and to continue with developing the airport so it becomes the jewel that we have here in this area. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor?
My question would be regarding those seven items. If you had to prioritize three most important, number one is definitely one, I understand that. But what would be the two other most important items that you would want to see?
Right now, that would be the internet and the lighting. We've actually prioritized those for you in the road.
So those are in the order of priority? They're not just a list?
No, that's the priority that we would like to see.
Thank you.
And actually, there is one other thing that I forgot to mention, and that's our ongoing commitment with the town and with the Flying Club for our breakfast to sponsor us, where the town has previously donated $500 towards the pancake breakfast, and the county is willing to match that. So we'd like to just confirm that that will be available for this upcoming breakfast the first weekend of June this year as well.
Now regarding this, in the past, we, as councillors, were always invited to come and help with that breakfast. Is that something that is a standing invitation to councillors?
It's always open to councillors to come help, and come for a right to.
Thank you.
Scott, when we look at the runway and avion or lighting, I know that in the committee meetings that we've held, this has been sort of a priority thing to get these lights on the side of that runway. And yet you've got it down at number five.
Right. That's because this AFCO trailer got bumped right to the top because it's a very time-limited offering.
Well, yeah, the expense, the actual retail of that trailer is very...
Right. And if we can save $25,000 by jumping on something right now, we're willing to bump that up. The lights, we've been working on for the last year and a half, and we anticipate that we'll continue to work on those. So we do have active lighting out at the airport. It does work and does function. This is just an upgrade. That gives us better serviceability.
When you say you have 36 lights to be installed, you have those lights there?
We have all the lights. We obtained all the lights from the Creston Airport where they upgraded their facility. So these lights, Doug, what would you say those are worth retail?
Well, the upgrade in Creston was $300,000. We picked up all their used equipment, it would have cost us at least, I would guess, at least $75,000 or $80,000 that we've saved right there. What's slowing us down right now is the purchase of the tubs that go into the ground. It's a really big plastic bucket, goes down into the ground, holds the transformer and the wiring, and then the tops and everything came from Creston. We just have to clip them on and we're done. Saves the town a pile of money if we have a light out. Right now, we're in the middle of winter, we got out with a pickaxe digging out the transformers to get to the wiring, and with these tubs, you'll just be able to go in and get them done. So it should save us a lot of money enough once we get it done. It'll also raise the lights higher so that we're not covered with snow all the time.
Good. Thanks, Brown.
So as far as fundraising that you've done previously in the last year, other than the breakfast, which was really well-attended, what other things do you do for fundraising out there?
That's predominantly been our major focus for fundraising. And that's why we've been so focused on becoming a nonprofit society, so that we can actually access additional avenues of funding.
Scott, along with that, without being a nonprofit society, you cannot work the bingo, you can't work any of these others, you can't even apply for grants. So you've got to have a, you know, a nonprofit organization.
It took us about a year to get that status. It was a long, drawn-out process, but it's just happened within the last month and a bit. And so we're excited to move forward on that.
Councillor Court?
I've got a couple of questions. I'll show me ignorance by asking, who owns the airport?
That's a good question. The province, from what I've been told, owns the airport. The town is the managing authority of the airport.
Okay. And question two, the county, have they offered it any money or just working kind?
Both.
Okay. All right. Councillor Drew and Councillor Self?
I just wondered with the helicopter now landing there, is there a fee for them?
There's no fees at the Carson Airport. We feel that fees drive business away. And we like to keep the airport open to as many people that are willing to come there and provide as many services as we can.
Councillor Self?
So Scott, now that you're a nonprofit, are you up there for a casino?
Not yet, but we talked about it. We just received our nonprofit status last month, and so our next meeting is this coming Thursday.
Okay, I'll help you at the casino. I've been there enough.
Super, that's good.
Yeah, I had exactly the same question because I understand if you were able to get revenues from a casino, it would bring you somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000 in two days.
Absolutely.
But it takes a couple of days, or sorry, it takes a couple of years just to get in.
Yeah, so that's what I was wondering, how fast can you?
Yeah. We've got, one of our members is actually looking into talking with the casino and getting those talks moving forward right away.
Yeah, because I mean, as much as it is offensive to some people, it is the way the government allows you to raise money, it is.
There's another, a lot of other avenues for fundraising, as I mentioned, especially involved in education. You know, if we can get classes going that teach basic aviation to high school students, to less fortunate students, there's a lot of grant money available for that as well. And that's something that we'd like to see. We've actually looked at purchasing a couple aircraft kits that we can build as a club and involve students and you to come hands-on, help build these aircraft and learn more about them.
Councillor Van, do you have a comment or a question?
No, for the new councillors, it like that is to your presentations, Scott. It was a matter before we could get our nonprofit status that we had to have a governance model in place. And so the committee has worked on that for the past year and a half, two years, Doug. And they have their policies and procedures, everything is in place. And that's what afforded us the ability to apply for our nonprofit status.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Mr. Straddy, are you ready to?
I am.
Just with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Just waiting for the boot up here. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. This is kind of the annual report that I do, kind of the State of the Union address of what's happening from an assessment point of view to the town, where the market is, where it's going, as we see it. There is no major changes. We've had to make some adjustments. I don't know what you want me to present. I presented a whole why we do what we do. I presented the analysis on the three years of historical sales that we have to present. Tell me what you want, and I can...
Because there are a certain amount of new councillors here, could you maybe explain the rule of the bracket that would allow you, you know, the 95/105?
You bet. Yep. We've got that PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah.
Soon as it goes up.
I think if you could explain that, that's probably the most important thing to understand in the way you do your assessment at the end.
Okay. How much time do I have?
How much do you need?
For this presentation, probably about a half an hour.
Yep.
Is that doable?
Yep.
Okay, can you make that full screen?
Another item that I think would be important to understand is the categories that have definitely a change in the assessment range.
Yes. Good, I've got that.
And the adjustment you had to make.
Okay.
I think if we understand that, we'll be well on our way to understand assessment.
Okay, so if you have any questions at all at any time, just shout them out because this is very informative for me. So we actually give this presentation to all new councils if they ask for it, and so far this is probably our fourth one. We developed this about 10 years ago, and it's morphed over the years to keep up with the legislation changes and what needed to be done and what we feel the council's focus is. This one is geared toward the urban municipalities. We have another one that's geared toward the rural municipalities. So it just talks more about the RAP exemption and the farm status and the assessment of the farm, which I'll be touching, farmland, which I'll be touching on. So as your assessor, there's certain qualifications that I have to have. I have to follow the Municipal Government Act, that's our Bible, that's legislative. I have to have the qualifications of one of those three designations, AMAA is the designation that I have. If you're AACI, which is a credit assessor, you could also be and work for the provincial government or for the Association, Assessors Association of Alberta, too. We do have two AACIs working with Benchmark. They specifically work on the non-res property, which is done a little bit differently. And I'll explain that, too. So what we want to talk about is what is being assessed, why we assess what we do. Municipal Government Act outlines all of that. There are certain properties that do not have an assessment on them. We don't accept, we don't assess roads, streets, any irrigation works, that's totally exempt. For instance, you were talking about the airport. The airport runway and everything associated with the airport is totally exempt, too. So the act defines property as a parcel of land and improvements, a parcel of land and the improvements on it. Improvement, that gets a little screwed around when people see that on their assessment notice. It's improvements to the land, is the definition of that. People say, "Well, I haven't done anything to my house. Why have you raised my assessment?" There is no improvement. And we say, "No, that's improvements to the land. That's your residence, that's your garage, whatever makes up a part of the assessment." So assessment versus taxation. First and foremost, I do the assessment, you do the taxation. We kind of play off each other and blaming each other for the raising the taxes. I blame you guys, you can blame me. And if all else fails, then we blame the government for it, for the school requisitions. Okay? So I'm responsible for putting a dollar value on every piece of property within this municipality. I'm responsible for every account. You are responsible for assigning a tax rate to it, a mill rate, if you will, which is a thousandth of a dollar, based upon your budgeting needs and based upon all the requisitions that you have from the government. So the relationship is the total municipal budget divided by the total tax or total taxable assessment equals a mill rate. And you have many different, you have a couple of different mill rates. You can have a split mill rate for non-res because they have a higher education portion. But that mill rate has to be applied to each one of the subclasses uniformly. Once that mill rate is set, every residence has the same mill rate. Doesn't have the same assessment, and I'll explain that a little bit, too, but you have to apply the same mill rate throughout there. I mentioned the school requisitions and the senior foundations, they make up a portion of your mill rate as opposed to what your budgetary needs are. Taxable versus exemption. Schools, churches, hospitals, municipality owns properties, nursing homes, they are all exempt. Legislation allows the municipalities to exempt nonprofit organization as a provision of the COPTER, COPTER which is the Community Organization Property Tax Exemption Regulation. And I have a test for COPTER that you can use. I don't know if I've supplied you with that in the past, but we can talk about that a little bit, too. So the Municipal Government Act is the ones that gives me the authority, the provincial act that gives me the authority to do what I do, along with other acts that are involved in this. There's the MRAD Act, which is mentioned there, Matters Related to Taxation. It gives the quality standards that we use. So the assessment value for property is market value. And there's two different types of values, market value and regulated rates. Regulated rates are set by the government. Market value is strictly set within the sales that happen within this municipality. You're not being compared to Claire's Home or Calgary or anything like that. It's totally market-driven, it's totally based on historic sales that happen within this municipality. So regulated properties include farmland, railway, machinery and equipment, and linear properties. Standards of assessment, as I mentioned, it's based upon the market value and it's prepared on a mass appraisal basis, which means that we break properties up into the different classifications based upon the age, condition, size, and overall marketability of the property. And we're trying to reflect the market conditions for similar properties. It allows us to assess a large amount of properties in a short period of time. And we have to use the value date of July 1st of the assessment year. So in this case, we set the market based on historical sales. We have to go back three years of sales, and we set it at July 1st, 2017, even though the taxes are applied in 2000. the taxes were applied in 2018. So when you get your assessment notice, it's a year behind already. But that's the value standard set by the provincial government. So the market value is defined by the regulation, the amount that a property might be expected to realize if it was sold on an open market by a willing seller and buyer. We have to review every sale that happens, every title change that goes through this municipality, we review. Some are not market value. Some, sale price is not always, as Dennis can contest, it's not always market value. And so we have to analyze that and scrutinize that. Some is estate planning, some is refinancing, and we have to get all of that out of there. So we're just interested in the sales. If, as Mayor outlined, we have to meet a standard, and I'll be talking about that, of 95 to 105, assessment to a sales ratio. If we're out of that sale, and nobody is going to hit every sale within 95 and 105, you just can't do it. Not unless you're sales chasing. When we're out of that ratio, say we have a ratio of 85%, then we go and talk to the people and say, "What, why is this, what's happening here? How come you got this kind of a sale, of this kind of a deal?" And if the reverse is the same, whereas we're assessing a tire and it actually sold for, if the ratio comes out to 130, something like that, then we have to talk to them too and say, "What happened? Is it father to daughter or something like that?" Just find out what the sale was. And sometimes we'll find out that it's sold and we didn't have the basement finished, or they've totally renovated the home, didn't take out a permit, things like that. And so once we find that, then we raise the assessment accordingly. I've talked about a couple of dates. These are the two dates that are crucial to the assessment. Valuation date, which is July 1st, and the condition date, that is December 31st of the assessment year. We go by what that property condition looks like as of December 31st. This is crucial when you're dealing with progressive houses, when they only might get 75% finished. Well, that's the level of assessment that we would use. Sometime it's, if it's an enclosed shell, which means they're going to work on it through the wintertime, we'll put it down to about 30, 40%. If the windows are in and they can work on it out of the weather. And that's why the date of December 31st is so crucial for us. Also, if a house burns down in July, it's January 15th, as of December 31st, that was a whole house being lived in, we wouldn't make any adjustments to that assessment. Usually because it's insured, well, 95% of the time it's insured and insurance is going to rebuild it as is anyway. Mass appraisal. As I mentioned, this is how we do a large amount of properties. It's a process of valuing a group of property as of a given date using a common data, mathematical modeling, and statistical testing. It allows the assessor to accurately value a large number of properties in a short period of time and ensures that the comparable classified properties are assessed and taxable in an equitable manner. When you hire somebody to do a fee appraisal for your house, they would incorporate these two valuation methods, the sales comparison approach, the cost approach, and the income approach. For market value, obviously, we have to rely on the sales comparative approach. But what we do is we have an assessment manual. What we do is we build an exact duplicate of that home based upon the size of the year and apply depreciation on it. So we're actually incorporating the cost approach plus the sales comparative approach on that. And I'll show you how that works when I do, show you the analysis. The income approach is strictly used for multifamily parcels, commercial revenue properties, and industrial properties. Hotels, motels are done on this approach if you have some good data, and it usually works out well for us on this. It doesn't, we don't incorporate the income approach in Cartston to that degree because most of the properties are owner-occupied. When we say the income approach, we're not talking about how many widgets that business generates, we're talking about what the property actually produces in rent. Trying to come up with the net operating income on that. So we collect the data based on the physical characteristics of the home. We divide it into classifications, and I'll show you that. We have a five-year cycle. The annual construction, the new permits, progressive houses are reviewed and re-inspected every year, but there's a five-year inspection cycle that is incorporated. We're just incorporating it here. What we've done in the past is every five years, I bring my crew up and we just kind of do a blitz through, or we'll just take, we'll just take street shots of digital photographs of every one of the improvements and adjust accordingly. And this year, we're incorporating a five-year cycle. So we'll do one fifth of the town this year, the next fifth, next year. So by five years, we'll have inspected every residence. And we have a crew that does that. They just go around to all of the, we do about 40, 45 municipalities. Every year, they just pick out a quarter or a one-fifth of that town and they go in and inspect it and move on to the next one.
When you say inspecting, outside, inside?
Well, obviously, we like to do inside, especially on the older houses. Anything older than, say, 15, 20 years, there could be some updates that we want to look at. Newer houses, once we make that initial inspection, when it's completed, we won't go back for a while, unless there's a need. For instance, I mentioned basement finish. If it's not completed, when the house is done, most of the time, the basement finish is added. But some of the times it's not. If it's owner-built, usually they'll move into the house and then build it over the years. And so we code those for re-inspection every two to three years, just to see how they're doing. We don't like to be in people's face all the time. It's just not good. And so we like to, if they don't have to see us, that's good for us.
Now, also, when you check with Nolan and Billy Puritz and...
Absolutely.
Stuff like that, whenever some new home renovation or addition or something is going on there, you would have access to all that, help you with your assessment.
Exactly. And if you guys know of somebody who's renovating their house, that would help me too. Jill's a great source for me.
So you want us to rat our neighbors out?
That all depends. If you don't mind subsidizing them in the tax, taxes, that's up to you.
That's a good one.
Any other questions, Morgan? Okay. This is a sale comparison approach. This is where we come up with the modified cost adjusting to the local sales. We have to be within 95 and 105 overall on our ratios. We can be out within the subclasses, but overall, and the final tally, if we're not within 105 or 95, my assessment analysis gets rejected by Edmonton and I don't pass audit. So if I come in with an assessment with a ratio of 94.9, I have to start again. An audit reviews my work every year, and I can't load it up to Edmonton until I meet that ratio.
Now, Morgan, that's overall, overall.
All the assessment.
Because you can't take, because you've got so many variations in the house and the circumstances.
Exactly.
That home was sold, you know? And then also, you've got estates where somebody's inherited a property.
And those are thrown out.
You just throw them out?
Just throw them out. You can't use them because they're not any indication of market. They'll skew your whole ratio if you rely on them or keep them in. And some of them just don't make any sense and you have to throw them out. They could be good sale or a good MLS sale, as you know, but they just...
Well, you've got repossessed by the bank.
Yep.
You know, they've got that house valued, and they've got a mortgage on that house for $165,000, for figure's sake. And it's on the market for a year, year and a half, and they can't get it sold because that house, maybe they've got that mortgage, but the house is in terrible condition.
Right.
So they end up selling that house for $95,000. That throws it off too.
Yep, exactly. Bank sales, we don't rely on at all because they're just dumping it for whatever they've got into.
Yeah.
And so we don't rely on those too. And then you've seen where banks flip amongst banks and credit holders sold. We don't rely on those very much at all. Even when, even when the person who buys it comes and talks to us and said, "I paid $50,000 less than that." I said, "Yeah, you did." Come on, is that really, would you sell it to me for that type of thing?
Every time, right?
Yeah, well, you know, common sense has got to dictate here too. Okay. Each group of properties is looked at and adjusted according to the market value based upon the ratio analysis. Properties are grouped by classification, age, location, size, and condition. Those are the things that we're looking at in the home. And that's what determines the classification that we use. And I'll show you how we break that down too. I've mentioned all of this, 95 to 105. COD is just the coefficient of dispersion, which is the range within the range of the classification. We can't be more than, we can't be less than 15. It's part of the statistical analysis. Don't see anything else in there. Cost approach. Cost approach is what we use for the cost manual. We actually use the Marshall-Swift. This is a North American cost manual that we use and incorporate. They do their updates on our system every year, and we see where our market is based upon what they have incorporated, and then we make the adjustments. We can make a 15 to 20% adjustment on that. So we look at all the depreciation factors affecting the value of, anything that affects the value, we kind of look at. For instance, if somebody builds a huge barn or shed in somebody else's backyard or next to their backyard ruins their view of the mountains, we could look at that because that could affect the market value. It's not something that we go looking for, but if they bring it to our attention, then we would definitely use. So the income approach is used primarily for the larger centers. Very few of our municipalities do actually rely on the income approach for. It's just the data is not enough there. What you're looking, what you're looking for is what that space is renting for per square foot. How much, how much is this office worth based upon the square footage? And then you apply, you apply a cap rate to that. As I mentioned here, it's not the real estate, it's what the actual building is generating. So asset is what, actually, it's our big brother looking over our shoulders and making sure that we follow all the regulations. We have to submit that by February 28th of every year. It has to be up there. If it's not up there by February 28th, we're found in non-compliance and it takes a minister order for us to load it up after that. There's never been any time that we haven't in any of our municipalities met that date. It used to be that we were sending it off at 429 to get it up there, but things are going well, we have good staff, and it's really slick the way that we're doing it now. Pretty happy with the crew that I have, actually. So any changes that happened or corrected under a 305.1 or 305.3, we can change those anytime during the year if something is brought to our attention and error. For instance, we might have the wrong square footage, they didn't follow the blueprint or something to that effect, you know? Like we've added basement finish, we didn't get in, because we're only getting into about 50% of the houses. So we have to make our best judgment call on those. And that's pretty standard, 50%. So we have to, obviously, put a value on it. If the informers, that there's something that we're assessing or they're reviewing their assessment and think we're high, we'll make an inspection there. And if we find something, then we'll change it under a 305.1.
One question I have, when somebody requests a reassessment on the property because they think that their property has been assessed too high...
Yep.
At that point in time, you have to, they have to make that house available to you to come and look at it so that you can take and make a proper judgment on that because you can't do a drive-by and something like that to reassess.
Exactly.
For example, somebody's going to say, "Well, you know, my house was assessed at $200,000," and the house is falling apart, they haven't been inside, the drywall, you know, not in good shape, the floors are in terrible shape, and you got a problem with plumbing and all that kind of stuff, old wiring. Well, you don't know that till you get in to look at it, right? So at that point in time, then you can reassess that if you have a proper evaluation on that property.
Yeah. That's what the 305.1 is exactly for.
Yeah.
So we can make that change. Sometimes, if it's not going to make a big difference, if they insist, we'll make the change. Sometimes we'll just make note of it and make the change the next year too.
Right.
But most of the time, we like to address, especially if we make the inspection. You know, we want everything, my job is to make everything fair and equitable for everything. That's how I see my job. If it's not fair and equitable, I can't defend it. And if I can't defend it, if they do appeal it, I'm going to make the change because I don't go to court revisions to lose.
Well, I have people who come to my office and they're always telling me, you know, when they're ready to do a reassessment and they're complaining, you know, in their opinion, you're the boogeyman.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, guys, you got to go in and if you really think that it's, you know, the value is here, then call in and do that reassessment. But if you're getting an assessment for $150,000 and your house is really worth $200,000, better keep your mouth shut for a year or two.
Yeah, I've had guys say, "I bought it for $15,000 less," and I said, "Well, you got a pretty good deal then, didn't you?"
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I mean, if they want me to make the inspection, I will, but there's no way that I'm going to be within 5% of every sale. It's not possible. So when we do our analysis, I forgot to mention, that we can only use sales up until July 1st of that year. Anything after that are not included in our analysis until the next year. So we're basically using the first six months of 2017 and back three years to 2015 to do our analysis. So it's very historic sales that we're using. And that way, you don't get the steep boom and busts, it's an average overall. Compliance, I've already talked about that. Assessment audit, those are the guys, they're the real boogeymen, actually. They're the ones who make me do my job, and they're really good to deal with, for the most part. Appeals. So if anybody's not happy with their assessment, I make the assessment and I say, "Okay, I'll make this adjustment." Say I make the adjustment for $10,000, and they say, "No, that's not enough, I want $25,000." I said, "If I put in $25,000, it'll destroy the equity. You'll be lower than the other houses that are assessed just like you in your classification." And they appeal it, which is their total right. They can appeal it every year if they want. Then it goes to the Assessment Review Board. It's called the LARB, it's the Local Assessment Review Board, and we charge a fee of $30? $20?
$25.
$25?
Test for review.
It varies depending on the municipality.
Probably around $30.
The reason that we charge or can charge up to $50 is it's really to get the appellant to talk to the assessor before he appeals and to get rid of the frivolous ones. Before, we had any charge at all, we were getting really strange appeals, you know, just the chronics. And every town has them, it's not unique, but it eliminates... but it eliminates that aspect of it. And, and some people think that that's the only way that they can talk to an assessor. When in fact, it's actually the last thing that they should do. Talk to the assessor first and what they do. Did I just shut it down?
Good question. There you go.
I didn't do anything. So that's the last thing that they should do is, is appeal. You know, that's the last resort for them. First thing is talk to the assessor and see what we can do.
So are you saying then before that appeal, they talk to the assessor, he can make a judgment prior to that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the three oh five one that I was talking about.
Right.
Okay, they have thirty... Oh, yeah, it's sixty days now. It used to be thirty days. And now it's sixty days to appeal, which is, well, actually sixty-seven.
Notice comes to them.
After the assessment is mailed out. It's actually sixty-seven because you have to take in the dates, the holidays and. I mean, if a guy doesn't know that his assessment is wrong within thirty days, you think another thirty days can make a difference? This is actually for the tax agents so that they can drum up business from corporations and say, hey, we think we can help you out and get a discount here. That's what that is all about. They're the ones who push the government into that because that's not what we recommend at all. Local assessment review boards, you use the planning commission for that, don't you, any appeals that happen?
Yeah.
So you don't have to worry about it. There's a course that you can take. And once you complete this course, you can be on boards anywhere in Southern Alberta if you're called to. And I think councillor Bangre can tell you how much fun that is.
Mayor is on that also.
Oh, yeah. How much fun that is to be on that board. And that's about it. So how do I go back to the analysis?
Is it in this PowerPoint?
It's not in this PowerPoint, but it's.
You can probably get up there. Oh, right. You had some other stuff on the flash drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Morgan, before we go on.
That first one?
Yes, the first one. Can I control that? Yes, I can. This is the one that's in your baggage?
You may just want to have Jill take you where you want to be on it, but I don't know.
Okay. Do I control this or do you control it?
I control it.
Okay.
Morgan, before we go on, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
Because I represent the council on the airport. The main statement in your opening presentation that you don't assess airports. Now, is that the landing strip and the land around it?
That's correct.
Okay, now then how do you derive a figure assessment on the hangars?
Hangars? We have rates for hangars. It's a part of the Marshall Swift presentation.
Is it?
Oh, yeah. We have specific classification for hangars. Because they don't sell, I have to work with the, with the owners on that to see what kind of money they've got into it. As much as possible, but you know, a lot of them are home-built and so they never sell.
As I say, the market value, where do you get your comparisons from?
Exactly. Where do you get your comparisons from? That's why we use the cost profile. That's why we have to incorporate too. Because specialty properties don't sell. You know, and you still have to come up with assessment. For, for instance, a meatpacking plant. What's the value of that if it's not a set, if it's not a meatpacking plant? Very specialty property. You have to come up with a value on it and it's based on the cost approach, the square footage.
So additional to this, to this question, any buildings on the airport that are used for administrative purposes like the air pilots lounge, the shed for the fire extinguisher and so forth, are they taxed?
As long as it's part of the airport operation, I would say no. And if they do, you can look at that under copter. Because it is, is part of the community organization and it actually benefits the community. So if they fill out the copter form on anything that is assessed, I can't think of anything out there other than the, than the than the hangars that is assessed. I might have an assessment on it, but it's not being taxed. It's exempt.
That'd be just for insurance purposes.
What's that?
That'd be just insurance purposes if they had to be replaced.
Right.
Can I look at your mouse a little bit better?
Okay.
What question are we hearing from Jill?
Councillor Selk? So more utility companies, Adco, Chiefs of Gas, they pay tax?
Yes, they do.
And a second question if I may. So there are some subjective things to value properties like deterioration of a neighborhood because of certain neighbors. Does that factor into your assessment?
That, that can. That can. If you're in a, yeah, yeah. It can. It definitely can. But that would show up in the market too. And so we can analyze that. If they think it's a loss in value, we would have to, to see comparative sales within in that neighborhood. They have lots of filler properties that happen, you know, they buy them for, it used to be a lot worse than it was. They had some. Councillor Bangre has got a question.
So along with that question, councillor Selk, what if somebody comes into a neighborhood that's got thirty-year-old homes and they build a million and a half dollar home? Does that, what does that do to the other homes?
Well, based upon the, an economic principle, it actually would raise their values. It would bring that one down somewhat, but it would actually increase the the, the value of the existing homes, wouldn't it? Based upon the principle of diminishing return, I would think that would.
You'd almost think it would be the reverse of that. You know, it would almost devalue their homes even more.
Devalue the lower-end houses?
Yeah.
It would increase it.
Not, not in the market.
It would be, it would be more desirable to live there now that you're next to a million-dollar house. It would, it would bring that market up.
Have we had low-cost housing in that area?
If you had low-cost housing in that area, like row housing, is that what you're talking about? Your row housing is pretty strong value right now. And I'll show you that in the sales here. So it could, it could because of the increase in traffic and such. Uh, let's go to the top. Let's go to the top. Okay, yeah, this is the vacant sales that we use for our analysis, two thousand fourteen to two thousand seventeen. They're actually set up according to the sale date, so it's by year. So you can see, can you go down to the total there? Oh, I don't have that. You can see the total of, that's the grand total. If you go up with your marker, you can see a total, yeah, right there on that line. Go over. So for, for two thousand fifteen, you can see the number of sales that we use. Each one of these lines is an actual sale of vacant land within the town of Cartston. Two thousand, you can see the sale date, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
You got laser on there too if you want.
Oh, yeah.
That yellow button.
Let's do that. Yeah. Okay. So this total here indicates where my ratio is for this group of sales for two thousand and fifteen. You can see where the, the, the sales right in here. This is my ratio. And so you can see that one's out of the boundary. This one's below. That one's within, 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 within. And so we take this whole total and do a an analysis of it to see where the average is and based upon two thousand fifteen, right there, the sales date, my average sale is a hundred point three based upon land value. There's the total assessed value here and there's the sale price. This adjusted sale price that you see here is a time adjustment factor. We have to bring it, as I mentioned, we have to bring it up to July first, two thousand seventeen. And these are two thousand fifteen sales, so we have to apply a time adjustment to it. That's just another statistical formula. So right there, based on two thousand fifteen, my ratio is one hundred point three, right where I want to be. Two thousand sixteen, your value's dropped on your base, on your sales. One oh nine point six, so I'm out of the range on this one. Can you go down to the grand total? So in two thousand seventeen, you only had two vacant sales that actually happened in this market zone, one hundred, which is the largest market zone that were usable. And that ratio based upon these two sales is, is ninety-six. So my grand total, which is taking all of these for the last three years, is not one hundred point three. So I'm well within the parameters of what it takes.
So you're saying that that's going to be within a five-year period to make sure that ninety-five?
Three years.
It's a three-year period.
We have to use three years.
Ninety-five dollars five, as long as you're in that for three years, you're okay.
That's right. Okay, so now that's, that's the main market zone. That's the main market zone in the town in this category here. You can see, this is the next one, code one oh five, the Shaw Golf Course vacant sales. To make that work, I had to lower the value in two thousand, lower the value in two thousand seven, ten percent from, from the values in two thousand sixteen. The market has dropped on those that much. Ten percent, which is, you know, sale price here, assessment price here. My ratio here is one oh, one point nine for that group. The next group location is, is one point one, which is acreages. One sale acreage, one oh three right there. And that was in two thousand sixteen. The last two are commercial sales, vacant sales. Ratio is one oh three. You can see the, because of the limited sales, those are the, those are the years of the sales. Two thousand fifteen, this is industrial. That's my ratio, one oh three point five. Okay, so any questions about the land values? Because we're going on to the houses now. Listen, economy, housing sales right here is for three years of sales. What is that? So based upon those sales, you can see my ratios quite all over the place based upon these sales. Look, there's one hundred and twenty-one, way out of the ratio. But when you throw it into this kind of a schematic, you get a ratio of ninety-eight point six. It's what we're looking for. And to get that ratio, as I mentioned, we have to make, we have to adjust according to the, what the manual that we use based upon the replacement cost plus the land. And based upon the manual rates, we're ninety-six percent for this classification of housing. This is the lowest class that we use. These are actually tear downs and fixes up. You can, you can tell by the year built. Nineteen thirties, nineteen forty-eights, nineteen fifty-seven. These are, these are houses that are in rough shape. They're the filler houses. We, you can see that we're effectively depreciation, depreciating to nineteen sixty. That means even though it's built in nineteen forty, we don't depreciate past nineteen sixty because that's the ceiling for where the market tells us the depreciation factor is. Even though it's older than that, we just go down to nineteen sixty. Unless it's a really, really rough house. Okay? So the next classification of, of houses is fair, older, character homes. These are nice homes. They hold their value very well. They sell. In fact, we're, our manual rate is ninety-two percent. We're at ninety-two percent of the manual rate. That can fluctuate every year and does on some of the houses. In fact, this year we had to bring it up five percent from two thousand sixteen because there was that kind of an increase in the value of these fair, older characteristic homes. And even at raising it at five percent, our ratio is still at ninety-two percent, which is outside of the boundaries. I could have gone higher, but I didn't feel it was necessary at this time, but I'll be paying attention to this. You can see that I'm lower in there. Okay, so the next one is the average older character homes. These are houses that are actually usually built before nineteen forty and they have some character design to them. Nice old houses. Our assessment on the manual rate is at ninety percent. Is that me doing that? Throw my brain off. I'm just trying to hit the pointer. So so there we go. Ninety percent of manual rate. We had to do a plus three percent from two thousand sixteen, okay? Nice old homes. Good market for them too. And our total ratio on these is ninety-seven percent. But you can see there's outliers in here that we have to play with. But overall, ninety-seven percent, which is within the boundaries. The next one is the fair quality homes. These are houses that were built after nineteen forty and before, after nineteen forty houses and before nineteen eighty. This is a fair quality, very boxy, very limited in size. They usually don't go past a thousand square feet. And if they do, like this one, twelve hundred and ninety square feet, it's probably been added on to over the years and it's been pieced together, okay? You can see the range of sales here, but my overall ratio is ninety-seven percent. The next is the, the oh three, oh fours, classification, classification of homes? Sorry, Jill.
You having a good time, right?
We're at one oh five on the manual rates. You have a good, strong market. This is really, there's more three oh fives in any community than in any other houses. These are sixties homes. They're built, good, solid homes. Retain their value, increase in value if they're at the upkeep this time. Okay, if you want to scroll down, you can see where our ratio is on that one. Ninety-seven point eight. And this, the next one is the semi-custom houses built after nineteen forty. These are really nice houses. They're bigger houses. Eighteen hundred square, twenty-four hundred square feet, eighteen, three thousand. It's the floor area there. Our ratio for this, one hundred point two. Without any adjustments from last year. Okay, this next class is the average quality built after nineteen eighty. The reason we use nineteen eighty is because there's stricter code for construction. After nineteen eighty, you have to have two-by-six walls or a staggered two-by-four so you can get more insulation in the wall. That's why we use this cat, classification. The oh four, oh four classification right there is just a standard box home. Not a lot of frill to it, but there is a good, strong market for it. We had to increase it five percent from last year. And our ratio is a little low on those. Even though we increased it five percent, we had to raise it. Sorry. Four fours, yep. Okay, good ratio there. Next one is the four fives. These are the semi-custom homes. These are the ones, the majority that are being built now. They've got some architectural design to them. They're split roof lines to them, usually an attached garage. Good market by the number of sales that you can see. You have a lot of these in town. Our ratio on that is ninety-seven point nine. Which is very good. And next is the custom-built home. Dang it. Custom-built home. We're at ninety-five percent of the manual rate. Our ratio is ninety-eight point two. Good sales. Mobile homes, these are really tough because they are all over the place based upon the condition of it. Limited sales, our ratio is ninety-eight point five five.
Is that with land too, those?
Always with land.
Always with land, yeah.
Yep, you can see the land.
Oh, yeah.
Parcel size.
Yep.
Land assessment right there. Improved, total assessment, sale price, and adjusted value right there, which is the time. We have one cabin. Don't ask me where it is. I know it's here because there's the roll number. Our ratio on that is one oh one point six. It sold in two thousand fourteen too. Okay, duplexes, ratio is ninety-seven point two. We're one hundred percent manual rate on the duplexes. Row houses, one oh five. That's why I said you have a strong, look at. Row houses, 105, that's why I said you have a strong, look at all the sales for row houses. This is where lots of the seniors tend to retire to. Good sale, good, strong market for them. Could you just back up one? Yeah, 105 is the manual rate, I didn't have to do any adjustments from last year to this one, we're 95.4. And apartments, got one sale of apartment in 2015, 95.6 is the ratio. And the rest are non-res property, commercial is the 200 class, industrial is a 300 class. The classifications don't fill in here properly, because it's based upon the Marshall Swift, and for some reason, they just don't come compatible on that. But overall ratio on the non-res is 102.6, based upon the sales. So that's basically how we do the assessment, in a nutshell. It's all statistical analyzing of mass appraisal data. And it's done every year, like I said, this is the most fair and equitable way to put a value on a property in a mass appraisal basis. That's about it. Any questions?
So if you need to have your house reassessed, do it within that 67-day period, and you wanted to pay the fee?
If, yeah. If you have a problem with it, you can talk to me anytime. But you can only appeal it within that 16-day window, 67-day.
Outside either one of them.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morgan. Appreciate it.
So there's a test for copter, that I'll just leave that with you. And that's against, this is really...
Flash track, we're gonna move down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Do you want to short break while we get Shane set up?
That's what I was thinking, yeah. So anybody want to restart?
We've got victim risk.
Come to the reassess?
Sure.
On paper? Okay? Okay? Good.